Okay, welcome everybody. I see it looks like we have a few guests at least.
Marilyn's microphone is off.
I'll ask if she wants to unmute. And Norm, I think from last time, if you want to see if the board wants to waive the reading of the extensive introduction, I think that would probably be appropriate as we've done enough of these meetings by now.
Okay, what's the feeling of the rest of the board?
Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion if need one to skip the intro.
Well, let's, okay, let's first of all, at least declare the meeting open at 6:32. Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? In favor, roll call, Dick.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Norm, aye. Okay. Which means we can go directly to, I believe, minutes of 6:9.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of 6:9.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. Those in favor, once again, roll call, Dick.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
And Norm, aye. And we then have minutes of, I can't get myself untangled here, of 6:17.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of 6:17.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay, and just for information, this was basically the public hearing for the agritourism bylaw. So any discussion on those minutes? Whoa, we're steaming right along here. Hearing none, roll call, vote, Dick.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
Norm, aye. Minutes are accepted. And, let me see, 3C, we have a variance decision from DCR on Grizzly Drive and Brittenell Drive. And I'm assuming this, well, this was obviously a variance regarding wetlands. And bottom line, I don't know if anybody wants to go into it in any depth, but basically they denied the variance.
Through the chair?
Yes.
It says revised site plan of Brittenell State revised March 31st, 2020. How come, I've never seen those. What revised plans are they referring to?
I have absolutely no idea, but my guess would be that that is, first of all, probably something that was, I'm gonna say initiated through Concom and then to DCR. Or maybe just to DCR.
Would that...
I think, sorry, I'm just gonna jump in, I say, and tell you that I understand that this matter is before the Conservation Commission at this point, or has been recently. It has not come before the planning board. We don't have any clear indication of when it will come to the planning board, however, we understand that this might be the next subdivision that is constructed.
What about the revision? Shouldn't we have seen it and discussed it? Voted on?
I think, I think what's happening here, Dick, is that the applicant is choosing to do one board at a time, and the applicant is not doing multiple boards at the same time. So it's largely out of our control, I think.
And once, once again, these, these revisions, and again, I don't know for certain, but my guess is, these revisions are strictly involving the wetlands.
Norm.
I believe that's correct.
If I may, not to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission, but we did receive revised plans in early April, and the revision was strictly to the stream crossings. It did not have anything to do with the subdivision itself. It was just for the stream crossings, and that went through a third-party review with Quinn Engineering. And as of our meeting last week, they have an approved order of conditions. So the Concom is aware of the variance denial, and everything is copacetic on that end.
Okay.
Still, should that not have gone through us? It is an alteration of a subdivision plan.
I think ultimately it's gonna have to come before the planning board in order to be, in order to have those plans approved as the revised plans. Yes, I agree.
The other thing that I would, I would just note is that, I don't know if it was DCR, Army Corps, or whoever it was, and I went along, there was a sidewalk later this spring going out through there, and there was some significant talk about even further eliminating the disturbance to the wetlands. My guess is that this denial of the variance came before, actually is from before that discussion took place. So it's very possible that there are gonna be still further revisions to that. And it is strictly regarding the wetlands, which, as far as I am concerned, the wetlands are, you know, that's Concom and DCR. That's not us.
This is the construction of a roadway over that.
Right, but if there's no difference in the roadway, if it's just, it's just a difference in the, in the disturbance to the wetlands, you know...
How do we know? How do we know?
At this point, I'd have to say, no, we don't. But when he actually starts construction, we are going to have to then, you know, first have complete plans, complete updated plans. Like I say, my guess is that number one, there's just a couple of things that came up even at that, at that sidewalk, that they were definitely going to look at reducing the wetland impact, and they were talking about possibly actually narrowing the roadway at the wetland crossings. Now, something like that certainly has gotta come before us.
Norm, if I may, the, to answer what you were just saying, yes, the revision included reducing impacts to the wetlands. I think it reduced it by close to 4,000 square feet. And there, the way that he did it was by he added an additional four box culverts, which is what those revised plans were pertaining to. And Dick, if you're interested at all in seeing those plans, they are posted on the Concom's page under News and Announcements. And then I can also, if you'd like, I can get you a copy of the approved order of conditions, because it gives specifications for the replication, the amount of square footage that they're gonna be replicating.
Okay. Yes, I would like to see some of that.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, we go to number four, A&R for East County Road. And you have the Form A application and the plot plan, which it looks like they are creating four lots on East County Road and Wachusett Street. It appears, at least to me, that they all have the required frontage and required area. Any further comments by anybody?
Why, something... I can't see, you know, I couldn't see the printout here that well. Is there any way to, for some reason or other, I always thought there was no way that could be on 68, the three lots?
Are the applicants here, if you'd like to ask them some questions about this? I'm not sure if this is architect or surveyor.
Hi, yes, this is Al Samara. Yes, it was my surveyor.
No, I was asking if anybody from your team is here as well, or is it just you?
It is just me, sir.
All right, so, okay, good. So, and to the board, the applicants here, if you have any particular questions?
And who, who's the one that did the survey? It was a DNR survey?
That is correct.
All right, I've gotta do a little bit of, a little bit of discussion with some other gentlemen, another surveyor, because it was very close to where another company moved the marker. So I gotta make sure that it isn't involved with your property.
Okay.
All right. The only other thing I, I wrote down on this thing is, how the heck did you get at the perk? Because I live up, I live up, I live up the hill around the corner, and my father worked in a business in that house down there for a while, and all that property around here was very terrible for Perkin.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's the next step. Wanted to see if we could get through this one first.
Dave, does the plan have an engineer stamp on it?
Yes, the mylar that we have in the office has an engineered stamp on it, yes.
Okay.
I didn't see anything wrong with the plans. Did it, any of you guys? It looks, meets the frontage, it all looks pretty regular.
Let's just say that...
Property markers you're talking about, Dick?
Yeah, it's up on 68 on the far end, on Lot 4, but I don't know if it was this property or the next property beside it, the, you know, several years ago, there was a situation. So I've gotta find out if it was taken care of.
And David, my question on this is, because it has 200 feet on Wachusett and East County, it's not considered a lot that's not, that we weren't going to allow, correct?
And these lots, for the underlying, so the underlying zoning district requires lots with 1.5 acres at least, and 200 feet of frontage at least, and two of the lots have the 200 feet of direct, real, practical access from East County Road, and then the other two lots have the direct, practical frontage access from Wachusett. Obviously, the existing house is already set up for access.
Yep, okay. Okay.
Of course, Matty Smith's ghost is still there. In case, I don't know about you, Norm, knowing a little bit about Rutland, but that was a stagecoach stop, and she was the station master for the rail line, you know, up a little bit further there.
Yeah, I remember those stagecoaches.
I did. Dave, one question, the, it says the Ark of Opportunity in North Central Massachusetts, Inc., Lot 1, and then it's got another Lot 1. Is that gonna matter on this plan, that there's two Lot 1s?
That's all.
For this purpose, no. I mean, the Ark, what they're doing is showing the adjacent owners on all three sides here.
Okay.
So the adjacent owner is, one of them is the Ark. That's Lot 1, as shown on that plan, so described. What's happening here is that you're getting four lots. These lots, at the end of the day, will get their own parcel IDs assigned by the assessor, and there will be no conflict with what's happening here.
Okay, that was my only question, because I saw two Lot 1s, and I didn't want any confusion. All right.
I wanna know, I wanna know somewhere about the stagecoach.
Oh, yeah.
And didn't Dick that go up, mostly Brittenell and Sassawanna as its route, correct?
That is correct.
Well, Norm, you could have stood out front and watched the coach go by.
I did.
No, but I mean, the, the original person that bought the house, Van Lowen, way back, he was disturbed quite frequently with a ghost. We always figured it was Matty.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah. She scares the heck out of me. When I used to walk, coming home from school, she always had a cudgel. Always paid attention.
Okay, okay. So what's the cudgel?
Motion to approve A&R lots 1 through 4.
Endorse.
I'm sorry to endorse.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion on it? Okay, hearing no discussion, roll call, vote, once again. Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Unanimous. And obviously, we will have to get up to Town Hall sometime shortly to endorse that mylar.
Dave, I'm not sure, do you have the amount of the check and the check number for the record?
Yes, I'd ask Al if he could just provide that information. He got his check out, it was sent, it was sent after he filed. So Al, can you just provide that information, what the check number is and how much it's for, please?
I've gotta go look in my, give me a second, I'll look in my sent email.
Thank you.
It was for $500, I know that for sure.
Yeah, good, good.
Sometimes tracking down the actual mail can be a lot of fun. Let's see. Oh, you know...
Not if you're a certain New York senator who deletes everything. No names, and I'm not in trouble for that.
That's right. It's somebody else's fault.
Yep.
Okay, check number 369, $500.
Thank you, Al.
Okay, and that's, that was in the mailbox last night, so I don't know when they pick up, but it should be there shortly.
All right, thank you, good.
So is that check in the mail, is what I heard?
Yes.
Excellent.
And I'll check with Damian in a couple days.
So Norm, I've gotta ask you, am I a legitimate board member, or am I in limbo like the rest of the election yesterday?
Were you sworn in?
No.
Then I would say, no, you are not.
Okay, I will do any more official business then. I'll just sit here.
However you are, definitely welcome to ask questions, I assume, so.
Yeah. However, Tamika, he definitely should not be mentioned on any votes.
Okay, should we redo the vote then for the A&R, since Tim made the motion?
Put him up too far because the motorcycle...
I would have thought that the clerk would have reached out to me, but that didn't happen, so I, because I don't know what, I don't know what the procedure is, since the Town Hall's closed.
I do wanna say congratulations, Tim.
Thanks.
Yeah, I know, it was a hard fought battle.
It was, I was watching that one.
Yeah, it was, Mickey Mouse was up on me on five votes, and then I took it over.
If we need, if we need to change that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to endorse it.
Why doesn't he just recant or his...
I'll, I will, as a citizen, I was inappropriately made a motion. So I would like to withdraw that motion.
Okay, so we need someone to make the motion. Sean, did I...
Dick, I'm making a motion to endorse the A&R.
Second? Okay, discussion. In favor, Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Okay. Onward. Public hearing for special estate lot 27 Glenwood Road. Applicants were Sylvia and Roman Rusbison, and we have already looked at the A&R that accompanies this. We have the application for the special permit. Is the applicant interested in making any presentation?
Hello?
The applicant's representative. Yep, there you go.
How's it going?
Going good.
Doing well, thank you.
Okay, can I speak now?
Yes.
Okay, we have a parcel off of Glenwood Place. We're going for the estate lot. It's the parcel way over to the, looking at the plan, up on the top. It's got 50 feet minimum width. Then it goes into a large parcel of property, which has the, like 18, a little over 18 acres in when it's, when it's done. So we meet all the criteria. We show a line approximately where they wanna build a house. That's where they're gonna build a house. We have well over 200 feet of building width. That's pretty much, I feel, we feel, we meet all the special permit requirements for an estate lot for this parcel.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? I think I would just like to make a brief comment, because, you know, we have had some applications come in for, oh, I don't know, site plan, estate lots, and all that sort of thing, and I realize the application is rather lengthy and so forth, and a number of them were, let me just say, filled out to probably not the best of standards. If you look at this actual application, I honestly feel that it was, it was very well filled out. Each of the questions was answered with, you know, something that, it looks like they really took a look at what the question was and gave an answer to it.
I agree, Norm, very good.
Thank you.
Now, you set the bar very high, Julian.
That's the only way I set the bar.
Except when you trip.
Okay, anything further on this? Anyone from the public? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Also move?
One second.
Okay, motion seconded. Any discussion? In favor, Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Do I have a motion to grant the special permit?
I'll make a motion to grant special permit.
Second.
Again, any discussion? Hearing none, once again, roll call, vote, Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Norm, aye. That's the four out of five that we need for a special permit, so it is granted.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
It's already been done?
We already did that.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did we have an amount and check number that you'd like me to reference in the minutes?
I care about this. I'm done.
I have that in the office. I can get that to you afterwards, if you don't mind.
No, no problem. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Maple Hill Estate Subdivision Administration. I don't know, do we have anything on Maple Hill?
We have a report relative to particle size distribution that was sent over by Quinn. We included it in the board's packet for information. I think the conclusion was that the, that the material meets the requirement, as you'll see in the email accompanying the, accompanying the particle size report.
Yeah, okay, I did see that. And I stopped over there yesterday, I think it was, and it looks like they were screening topsoil like mad and doing some other work, but not much of anything towards the front of the subdivision. Looks like they've got, they hadn't started bringing in the gravel for the front end of the road or any of that yet. Anybody else? Any comments on Maple Hill?
No, not at the moment.
Nope.
Okay, next item, subdivision development administration, Bryce Lemon. I think we are still waiting for some stuff, particularly on that retaining wall and fence. Again, I took a ride over there on Monday, and they have not done any paving or anything like that over there. It, it does look like the entrance from Main Street is now drivable. I don't think they put down any gravel, but they have definitely done some grading. I did not drive in myself.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Kevin Quinn, he's Quinn Engineering.
Yes.
I'm trying to get connected.
Okay.
Just checking with you. Carl is unable to be there tonight, so I'm filling in for Carl. And I have been following and working with him on Bryce Lemon and also Maple Hill as well. And I, I have been following and working with, with him on Bryce Lemon and also Maple Hill as well.
Yeah, if the board recalls at the last meeting, you were, were wondering if, if either Carl or Kevin would be available at tonight's meeting, so I guess it turns out that Kevin is.
Yes.
Okay, I, I guess, I don't know, my, my particular question before just let you kind of freely do anything is, we seem to kind of be going back and forth and back and forth on this on this retaining wall fence and so forth. Can you give us any kind of clarification?
Again.
What, what, what is needed, where it's at? And what we should be seeing?
Sure. Initially, they wanted to put in guard rail. And the issue with guard rail is it couldn't be secured adequately to the wall. So the contractor from Martelli came back with a plan to put retaining wall block on top of the retaining wall. Which would be like a wall raised up above the grade of the road. And it would be filled with concrete and steel reinforcement to kind of tie it in there. The idea being that it's, it's, in lieu of a guard rail, it's a big sturdy block that would keep automobiles from going over the, 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 the wall. We're not structural engineers, we're not really able to advise you on it, it seems to be pretty, pretty good. Carl has communication with Joe Buckley and Joe's indicated that he finds it satisfactory. I think the only concern or comment that we would have is if a car hit it and they were going fast enough, the manufacturer has said they can't assure you that there wouldn't be damage to the retaining wall. By tying this wall into the retaining wall itself, if a car hit it, possibly the entire retaining wall could be damaged, conceivable. And if an accident, if a car hit it, then probably would need to be repaired afterwards. By my lights, it's a pretty, pretty tough install. It's a, it's a heavy concrete block filled with concrete and steel reinforcement. So I, I would say from a gut level perspective, it's, it's probably okay, but I think the key is the planning board has to be comfortable that if this was damaged, the entire retaining, if it got hit by an automobile or a truck, that entire retaining wall could end up needing to be repaired.
Did you say that Joe Buckley was happy with it?
He's indicated to us, we have an email from him and he said, he thinks it's, it's, he's, he's, what he said is he's not crazy about it. But it's, it's okay, he feels it's acceptable if, if if it's okay.
May I ask, what is the dimension of that block?
They are they're about two feet thick, they're about two feet thick. They're, what they are is they've, they've sent us a couple of diagrams. And there's a, there's a core opening inside of these blocks, and when you build them on top of one another, you can actually fill that core right up with, with liquid concrete and have it set up.
Yeah.
And what they did was they had a detailer develop reinforcement to go into that, that core opening. And then when they pour the concrete and you have steel reinforcing and concrete on the interior of the blocks.
What I was wondering if it was like three by three, of course, that's a cubic yard of concrete, which weighs approximately a ton. So this block is less than a ton?
Yeah, it wouldn't be three by three, but it'll, it'll be heavy, it'll be, it'll be pretty solid. And you know, one of the things we talked about here was you're talking about a wall that runs, the, the traffic, vehicle traffic runs in the direction of the wall.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not like a car is going to be doing 30 or 40 miles an hour and, and run headlong into the wall. They're more likely to glance off it. I suppose they could hit the butt end of the wall, but then that entire length of that wall would, would resist the automobile's momentum.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, Tim, you want to chime in on this one? Tim still there?
Sorry, sorry, Norm, yeah, I, I had some questions for Kevin. My main question, or one of the main questions is, we never got a detail of how this wall was being built, all we've got is cut sheets. The, the planning boards never, and unless somebody can tell me I'm wrong, never seen, if you want to call it a detailed you know, how this is laid out from a general arrangement to a detail of how it was being put together, we got cut sheets. I'm not comfortable with that for the town down the road, to your point, saying, what if it has to be fixed? You, you use a cut sheet to fix it? No, come on, that's not right.
Yeah, Tim, they did send us some detailing on it. I wouldn't say it's perfect, but it's fairly well detailed, and they did send us a, a quite well detailed quite a detail with a lot of information on the blocks that go on top of the retaining wall itself.
Yeah, and but what I was curious about, since they've done this, was, you know, the, the thing that's killed all of these retaining walls in this part of the country is a drain.
We just lost your audio.
Do you still hear me, am I still here?
You're still there.
Yeah, we can still hear you, yep.
Okay, I guess we lost him then.
With this hot weather, it's a wonder you haven't lost.
Talking about the drainage. Is there adequate drainage for, for erosion to rode around the wall? Cause it to collapse within time?
Well, erosion, my opinion is that erosion's always a, a concern. But these type of walls have a pretty good track record of stability. The wall itself, the retaining wall itself, we don't really question, and they seem to have a good lifespan. It's, it's, it's cast in, they're, they're manufactured in the, in a plant, under plant conditions, so the concrete quality is quite good. And I think the, the big question for us here is whether the board is comfortable with the, the blocks that are placed above that retaining wall. We're kind of drawing a distinction between the retaining wall and the blocks that are being placed on top of it.
Kevin, if I could just jump in, so I think a decision that the board probably should consider making is whether or not they leave it to Joe Buckley to make a determination whether it's accurate, whether it's adequate, rather. Or whether the board engages in peer review by an entity that specializes in structural engineer to review the structural plan that will be submitted by Blair.
Yes, yes, but there is a, there's another question, even maybe a little more fundamental. This, this came about because of a layout error. The, the blocks, the retaining wall was laid off, the head wall I should say, was, was laid about two feet off from where it was supposed to be placed. And what we're doing right now is working with them to accommodate that error. I don't know, the planning board is obliged to accept that at all, you could simply say, guys, build it to the plan. Ultimately, I don't think what we're talking about, what they're asking for is unreasonable or, or excessive, it's reasonable. But the planning board needs to be comfortable, first of all, foremost, that you're, you're willing to work with them to accommodate this problem.
Trust me, it was, it was brought up before.
If I may, you know, if, I'm, I'm okay with leaving it up to Joe, if he feels that he's okay with it. It's ultimately going to end up you know, he's the one that's going to own it per se, as far as the DPW director. If he thinks it's okay, I'm okay with it myself.
I have to agree with Sean, if it's okay with Joe, and Kevin, you even seem to think that it's considering where and how it's being used, i- it's pretty reasonable, I can see, yeah, you might want to get a lot fussier if this was along the side of Route 495 or something like that, but you know, it's a subdivision road that weighs from the entrance.
Joe's good at sewer. But is he good at this too? For background? I just want to make sure we have, have a proper engineering spec on file for it. For future.
Kevin, would you say the materials that we got from the manufacturer and their solution is a sufficient plan?
Well, certainly sufficient to, to build what, what they're proposing. We don't claim to be structural engineers or, or specialized highway engineers, so I can't assure the board that, that it's deficient. But I believe it is, in fact, I, I, looking at these blocks and the reinforcement, my belief is that this is probably stronger, it would stand up to a bigger impact than conventional guard rail. This is big block, it's constructed with concrete filling the voids and steel reinforcement, which is tied into the steel in the retaining wall itself. So it's, it's pretty rugged stuff.
You know, when they put in these wooden guard rails, how deep do they sink those six by six posts or whatever they are?
Well, they, it varies, but they go down fairly deep. But the thing of it is, the, the way those work and regular guard rail works is, it's, it's a longitudinal thing, if you, if a guy hits a guard rail, the guard rail long its entire length gets deformed and, and resists that impact. It's not just the one post, but the whole series of posts. Likewise with these blocks, they're all tied together. And if somebody really hit this thing hard, the entire row of blocks will be tied together and resist that impact.
Let's hope they have insurance.
Yeah. Okay.
I just got a text from Tim, he, he I'm, my internet died, sorry, I'm offline.
I don't know, I still see you.
What, Tim? No, this is Tim, he texted me.
Oh, okay.
Just to let you people know that he's offline now.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on this retaining wall?
No.
Okay, Kevin, anything else regarding either Maple Hill or Bryce Lemon that you're finding interesting?
Well, I've been following Maple Hill, it, last week they were preparing to put gravel down and it's, it's gone along pretty smoothly. They've got pretty good progress and I would expect to see a binder down in pretty short order.
Okay. And Bryce Lemon, anything else?
Sorry, I'm back, Norm, my, the internet died and now let me back in, I don't have any excuse.
Okay.
Bryce Lemon, you know, there's a lot going on there, the subdivision development work though is, is really not underway right now, for the most part, it's been mainly lot development work for them.
About the new pad off of Main Street, how's that looking?
Well, it's, it's, they're roughing it in right now, so from an engineering standpoint, it's, it's interesting. There isn't a lot of technical work going on yet.
I, I just can't believe the steepness and everything else, what's, everything that's going on, it's unbelievable.
Yep.
May I ask, did anything get done with the rail trail, did, did they you know, do anything on that?
No.
They have not.
You mean the connection to the rail trail?
Yes.
No, they haven't done a thing.
Jesus Christ.
Yeah, I, this is demo like it, I live right across from the detention, detention water point. I was expecting that they were going to start doing something, but they've not done anything, absolutely nothing.
Oh. That was one of the things that we wanted done a year ago, that, that really, really bugs me.
It doesn't seem as though it would take them a whole heck of a lot to grade that off.
No, not at all.
Okay, anything more on the two subdivisions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Carl mentioned also, there was discussion with the board about a policy on revisions, tracking revisions that applicants submit on plans.
Yeah.
I don't know if the board has had discussion of this in the past. We had a little bit of, Carl and I talked quite a bit about it, what we've recommended to the board, is this something you want to talk about tonight?
Uh, well, do you have any ideas?
I have, my ears wide open, please.
Right, well, on every, every plan sheet, there should be a, a revision block. It's a, it's a block where, with lines that each revision, after a set of plans has been submitted, revisions are dated and identified. And what we want to see in the revision block is what the revisions were that were made, say, changes to drainage in thus and such area, or sewer manhole deleted, something like this that describes it and dated. And for record keeping purposes for the board, the date of the revision is important because that's, that's your your record that, that they're working for the most current plan, if somebody walks in with a plan and they say the plan was prepared in July 2019, but you have a revision of June 23rd, 2020, you know you've got the current revision to that plan. And those revisions are important. And we think the board may want also to require applicants to show revisions on all sheets in the set, even if not all the sheets were revised. What, what happens is the sheets get separated sometimes. And we don't know if we're working from a current set. But if every single page in the set is labeled with the revision, even if the revision wasn't only affected a certain sheet or certain number of sheets, labeling them all is important from a record keeping standpoint, so the board may want to consider making that a requirement.
I like that idea.
I do too.
I think it should be on the agenda for our next meeting to bring it up, have a proper hearing and then get it voted on.
Yeah. I, I'm just, I'm trying to recall, looking at some of these plans. And, and I know there is a revision block on virtually all of the pages. But you know, all I remember seeing in that revision block is the date of the revision. Nothing about what the revision was, am I right?
Yeah, that, that happens quite a bit, and what, what's important now from our standpoint again is, is knowing what that revision was, what, what it pertained to. And in some cases, they can mark it right on the plan, you know, cloud it in and identify the number of the revision. And it, it's helpful, you know, one or two years down the road, when, when things have changed, you know, numerous times, having a clear record of that is important.
Kevin, this is Tim Narwold.
Hi, Tim.
What, what we've done, and again, this is my days at Riley when I was there, we'd always have a triangle next to the revision with the number of the revision in it, so you could see if there was five revisions, you could see what change happened with what revision.
Yep, yeah.
And it was so easy to, it's so easy to track that, but we haven't had it done and, and I'm just, I'm frustrated because like with these big subdivisions, you know, how do we define which is a major change and which is a minor change?
Right, well, that's, that's another whole question for the board too, is what, what constitutes a minor change?
Yeah.
I don't think those changes would be very hard to make to our subdivision regs.
No, I don't either.
Norm, i- i- is it administrative function or is it, do we need to make it a reg? Because I, I don't know if there's a difference, that's I guess a question I would have for the board, is that, is that administrative, do you need to make that into a regulation or can it just be an administrative requirement?
Well, you might not need to. But let's put it this way, if we get a revision in and it's not properly noted, you send the plan right back to them and you copy that page out of the subdivision regs and highlight it and say, try again, Sam.
Yeah, I'm good with that, Norm, I'm fine, I just was trying to get this thing in before we, before the rush of plans start coming in.
Yeah.
Okay, good enough.
Okay, anybody have anything else for Kevin?
Not at the moment. Maybe in the future, I might have one thing for him.
Well, Dick, you know my number?
Yes, I do.
Okay, wow, Kevin, you've already, you gave us some, you gave us some real good ideas here.
Good.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
If you, if it's helpful, we can, we can write up something for the board for your next meeting.
That would be wonderful.
We'll do that.
Thumbs up on that.
Hey Kevin, if you write something up and, and put an example with it, that would be, Norm, that would be easy to add into the subdivision regulations then.
Yeah.
We could, we could put a page with a, an example that references our paragraph and then, and I don't want to say this then, and I don't want to say this, but we've painted everybody into a corner where they've got to do this.
Yeah.
And this is what we want them to do. So we make it plain, when I say paint, we've given them examples, we've told them what to do, so there's no, what's the word I'm looking for? Confusion? On what our expectation is as a board?
Right.
Yep.
I like that.
I agree.
Okay, we'll, we'll write that up for you, for your meeting and we'll send it, we'll send it to, we'll send it through to you. And if you have questions before the meeting, give us a call. We'd be happy to work with you to resolve any questions the board has.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Anything else on subdivision by anybody?
Hi, Norm, this is Sean from 73 Woodside. I'm just checking in on the questions we had asked last week, waiting to hear from Holden DPW superintendent. I have spoken to superintendent Buckley regarding the water certification, stormwater certifications and things like that. And he stated that it's fairly new in the town. They only got their first report out late last year, early this year. And he does not know if it is made or designed to include retention ponds and detention ponds. He was gonna look into that and I'm waiting to hear back from him on that. Have we heard anything from the Holden DPW on how they operate?
Tim, have you had any luck?
No, I haven't. And unfortunately, I'm in the process of getting a new job, so I've been focused on that. So I apologize, the last two weeks, I've been worried about my mortgage and not the town of Rutland. Sorry. I will see what I can do now that that's taken care of this week by return. I'm gonna end up calling Stephanie and see what she can do for me as assistant town manager.
Okay. Okay, anyone else?
I just have one more thing, this is Sean from 73 Woodside.
Yep.
I'm just curious, I mean, we're going on almost eight weeks of getting kind of really nowhere with this. Is there some resolution or some plan we can kind of get to the bottom and lay all this out? Is there original permit that has pre-construction stormwater management, during construction, stormwater management, post-construction stormwater management? Is that something that falls through conservation, through DCR? I know DCR and DEP have had numerous say, or sayings in how this is to go. Is there, who's the best point of contact to kind of get everything out?
Well, you know, as far as getting things completed about, at least as far as I am concerned, uh, the, you know, the one thing that we, you know, can hold over the developer's head is acceptance of that phase of the subdivision. And I don't feel that there's really a whole lot more other than that. That's, that's my own personal feeling. Anybody else want to chime in on that?
You're right, that's all we have.
But if you, if you don't accept it, then it stays with him. He's responsible for plowing and everything like that. He has no say in how it can get changed because it's already been permitted. So with the permit being filed and the plan in place, he not accepting the road is just staying the same.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kevin Quinn, I know Sean unfamiliar with their concerns. The question here is that the bylaw directs that this type of project would be, would be predominantly left in an owner's association, in the ownership and control of owner's association. And I think the residents are interested in having that project accepted by the town. And I think the question would be, is the planning board amenable to that? And if, if so, is what, what would be the process that they would go forward with to petition the town to accept it?
Oh my.
Well, as far as acceptance by the town, basically the, the developer, you know, submits a request for acceptance. And, you know, it's, it's pretty obvious what has to be done, what has to be finished, and that sort of thing. Once they have requested that, we send our engineers in and actually usually some members of the planning board along with DPW, and we conduct what I'll call sort of final inspections to see whether everything has been completed as they are claimed. If that does not happen, if, you know, if they have not done everything as the plans dictate, then, you know, we tell them, no, you gotta go back to the drawing board and you've gotta fix this, these things up. We usually end up, well, let's put it this way, one of our other subdivisions, and I hope this doesn't happen here, called Bear Hill, we ended up with quotes, a final punch list of eighty some odd items that the builder had to correct before we were willing to, you know, go forward with acceptance. Now, there are some things, you know, certainly in terms of, you know, roadways, sidewalks, paving, uh, finishing off the, the grass strips in between the sidewalks and all that sort of thing, those all do have to be done. The drainage system has to be thoroughly inspected, cleaned, and the sewer system has to be retested, the pump stations have to all be tested. However, one of the things that I will tell you for this phase one, the detention pond that is located in phase one, it would not probably anyway not be a part of that acceptance because it also services phase two of the subdivision.
Correct. Well, I think that the, first of all, some of what, some of the documents that get processed when a, when a subdivision is submitted to the board, we don't actually have involvement in. But it's my understanding that this, this project, the, the documents are, are set up that an owner's association will end up owning the road, the drainage and water. I think sewer has been excluded for that, or they're trying to exclude sewer. But the question is whether the, it's the will of the, of the board to allow the owner's association to, to take over and own that, or is the planning board interested in, in accepting that, that, all of that infrastructure or, or some of the infrastructure for the town to own and maintain? Right now, the process is going toward, it's, the documentation, as I understand it, is set up that the, the completion of this project, when it's finalized, it'll be handed over to the owner's association and not the town.
Wow, that's not the way I had heard it.
The, well, the detention ponds, yes.
Yes. But that was it.
That's all.
And I like your idea, Norm, that the detention ponds should be part of the open space and part of the town.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not the way the plan was approved.
I know, I know.
So when I was looking on, this is Sean from 73 Woodside, when I was looking through the registry of deeds, all the paperwork that pertains to what's accepted and how the plan is accepted and the permit is accepted, all the details are missing. There's not, it doesn't say who is in control of what and when, pre-construction, during construction and post-construction. Now, with a permit being filed and, maybe Dave can chime in on this, being a planner and accepting those plans and permits, is there a plan or a permit on file from the original setup of this that was accepted and approved? That states all that information?
Norm, wouldn't all those permits from like the, the DCR and all that stuff, that'd come through CONCON, correct? It wouldn't have come through the planning board?
Most of that, yes, would. We have our notice of decision with the construction conditions.
Correct.
Uh, but it's not going to, it's not going to, uh, it's not, it's not gonna detail what is gonna happen to the detention ponds or, I guess I wanna call it off-site drainage.
So I, I brought this question up during the last CONCON meeting and they didn't really have any information to give forward. They said it was through the DCR and the order conditions that they put up once everything settled through the courts and whatnot and their side of the thing. The list they had was there, but it does not pertain to any, I guess, detention ponds or storm, really stormwater management. They just had to control what they had in place already after their filing. And they were curious to see what we came up with for an answer to that as well.
I don't know, I wish I should come up with a, with a wonderful answer for this whole thing.
In the business meeting that we'll discuss it?
Well, that doesn't mean we're gonna come up with an answer either.
I know it. Something that, I mean, in all honesty, this is something we should be talking about at a, at some kind of a business meeting and having Dave look into it and/or maybe the town council, you know, maybe chiming in on something like this. Should there be a permit or a better tracking?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kevin Quinn again, I think having town council look at this might be important because what you want to get is a clear assessment of where, right now, where this project is going and how the, how the acceptances will be, are going for. In other words, if there's gonna be a change in the process, the board probably ought to look at it and think about it now and structure that into how you proceed forward.
But, Norm, this is Tim.
This is, uh, Dan Muller from 57. This is Adam Muller from, what I want to say is that we've been at this for almost three months now and the board has gotten, given us no absolute straight answer to all the questions we've been asking. I want to believe that the board does force a response. It's a yes, it's a no, it's, this the process you guys need to go through. As you can see, all the people leaving in this subdivision of Bryce Lemon Estate, we do have an issue on ground and we have brought it up to the board, but it doesn't appear that anyone is taking it as serious as we are taking it and we keep getting runaround all the time. So the board needs to be able to direct us in what way to go or what approach. So that's what I would like to hear from the board.
It certainly, I guess first of all, it's not at all our intention to give anybody any kind of, any kind of a runaround. However, this is, you know, we're going back to a, a plan that was approved a number of years ago. We have, I believe anyway, approved a number of these open space plans where they, they also have these homeowners associations. It has not been a problem, or at least has not surfaced as a problem, let's put it that way. So this, this is, first of all, it's new to us. And, you know, you know, I guess we could, we could maybe go to even town council. It would seem, it would seem to me that the, one of the biggest things would be if somehow or other we could get those detention ponds out of the homeowners association.
Yeah, I agree.
That seems to be the solution. I don't know if there is a way we can do that. Town council might be able to give us some advice. My, my biggest question is, are those detention ponds part of the open space?
This is Sean from 73 Woodside. Those are part of open space. According to the, according to the plans and the documentation, those are part of open space.
Okay. So if those are part of the open space...
But on, there is also an easement built into that for certain drainage type pieces. I don't know, pertains to the detention pond or if it pertains to drainage structures like manholes, water filtration, separation, tanks and whatnot. Now, this all kind of goes back to square one saying that nobody else really knows about this in other developments. No one has seen it, really heard of it, and that's kind of back to square one with that. But also, I spoke to the town administrator, Mike Nicholson, in regards to this and trying to figure out some information and whatnot. And he said that once, that there's a potential that a petition could be filed to have the town take over that one particular space of open space, that one lot that pertains to the drainage structure, then it becomes the town's. But there's nothing we can do without the road being accepted or without any sort of plan in place to make that happen. That's, that's kind of what I guess we're getting down to here is who and what do we need to get in line to make something like that happen? Is it pre-acceptance that this has to be filed or is it post-acceptance from you guys that would have to be filed for the town to take over that one lot? That also, if you look at the plans, hooks around and also houses the pumping station. That same open space lot holds the pumping station. So that, that's a whole nother issue.
That was, that, no, the pumping station was tied in with the road, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
The pumping station, Norm, will eventually be taken over by the town. That's a given, correct?
Well, that was, if you remember, that, that is a change that we did make.
Yes.
On Bryce Lemon. Where, for example, down on Bear Hill, the pumping station is actually on a house lot.
Yes.
So, you know, we did change that.
Again, it helped you guys a lot because the revision map that I saw of property lines, that open space that went around the house lot, still had the pumping station on open space, which is all, in the end, eventually owned by the homeowners association.
Mr. Chairman? The, the plans?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, the, Kevin Quinn, the plans that we have in our office, that pumping station is in right of way.
Okay, yes. That, that I'm 99% sure of.
Norm, I just, as a, I guess I've got a question that is probably a question for Chief Buckley and for our attorney, our town council. If we did an amendment to the orders of condition of the subdivision and had the developer agree to it and have that as a, as what, what Kevin said, as a revision to the plan, would that, and take that, that retention pond out of open space, of course, the calculation would have to be done to make sure that it's still enough open space to qualify.
Well, that's plenty of open space, so that's no problem.
Then, I was thinking, is this something that we could have resolved by having it as an amendment to the orders of condition? I'm just throwing it out there. I'm trying to come up with a fix without keep going back and forth. And again, it would take our town council and a discussion with Chief Buckley to make sure that everybody's got buy-in, but that's a possibility, I think.
I think it would be worthwhile to get ahold of town council.
Okay.
I don't know, how's everybody else feel?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So what do we wanna lay out to, or so what does the board wanna lay out to the town council? Because David's gonna have to write something up to send him.
Basically what you just said.
Okay.
A, a procedure to remove the detention pond area from the land that is going to be owned by the homeowners association and have it to be owned by the town.
Okay.
Upon, upon acceptance.
This is, uh, uh, Dan Muller from 57 Woodside Avenue. Well, that is a welcome idea. Will give you willing to give us a timeline as to when we will have a, uh, you guys will let us know maybe by the next meeting that you have done this or we have, I mean, when we're gonna get a concrete answer, I mean, a response.
That depends entirely on our correspondence with town council. I, I, I would not even dare to, to give you a, uh, an approximate date. We're, we're, we're not relying on just ourselves here. We're relying on, you know, another one of our contractors.
No, I'm only, I'm only asking in regards to, uh, the part that pertains to, uh, the planning board as to when are you planning, will you be planning to get, to reach out to the town council? So that, I mean, we wanna give each other an update as to what is going on and I wanna be able to say, this is what the planning board told us and they will reach out to the town council by next meeting or two meetings from now. That's, that's just a question, my, that's what I'm aiming at.
The best I'll give you is that within the next two weeks, I'm sure we will have a question out to town council. When we get an answer back...
That's a good enough response for me, sir.
I'm not, I'm trying to tell you.
And Norm, this thing can't go to town meeting until the fall now.
At least.
At least, yeah.
That's a good enough response for me, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else on subdivisions?
I agree with Dee that that would be an acceptable thing if it had, and within that, if it made it, made it to that point in the town council could make something like that happen. I think that would be acceptable.
Hey, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, alright.
Okay. Uh, next, uh, on the agenda is accessory agriculture use bylaws, updates and schedule. Uh, Dave, anything new?
Uh, no, I'm just really briefly, so the planning board took this matter last week, voted it favorably. We received the, uh, support. So the next thing will be town meeting on this coming Saturday. Um, currently working on a report of the planning board and putting together a packet of the report, the presentation and the bylaw to be distributed to town meeting members.
Okay. Uh, next, uh, decisions on 134 Wachusett Street and Zero Pumagussit Road. I don't know if you sent these out separately. I didn't get them in the packet that I...
I sent them out by email, uh, uh, as a separate email.
Oh, okay. So I'm just gonna have to look on the screen.
Dave, do you need us to come in and sign all this stuff tomorrow?
Uh, as soon as possible, at least for 134 Wachusett Street. Um, the other one, we're gonna request be held until we have had a chance to outreach to the applicant to tell them that we need a second set of envelopes. I mean, certainly if the board wants to approve that special permit decision subject to, uh, subject to us getting the second set of mailing envelopes.
So... Okay, so the 134 Wachusett Street is all ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, anybody need to read anymore about that decision?
No, Norm, I went through it. I was happy with it.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Hey, do I have a motion to, uh, sign that notice of decision?
I salute.
I'll second that, Norm.
Okay. Any discussion? Hey, in favor, uh, roll call again. Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Norm, aye. And the Zero Pumagussit Road. Any questions, comments?
Come on up to that, Norm.
Was this the one that, uh, he had to change something?
Th- this is the one that he's waiting for the next set of envelopes.
Next set of envelopes.
Yeah, and also on this one, the board wanted to see the language improved relative to that the lot cannot be further divided to reduce its area or create additional building lots without a special permit. So we have that in there as condition one.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
But it doesn't show up on the plan or...
Right, the plan didn't have the proper note. And the note should be, lot cannot be further divided to reduce its area or create additional building lots. Uh, actually, what, the language on it was that the lot cannot be further divided to reduce its area, et cetera, without special permit. The board would like to see on there, which is out of the bylaw, uh, that the lot cannot be, that the estate lot shall not be reduced and that no additional building lot shall be created. So that's the language that is in the bylaw.
And I understand, taking, taking out the words without a special permit.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to, uh, sign this decision with the, uh, additional condition, uh, that we receive a second set of mailing envelopes for the decision.
I salute, excuse me.
Alright, second that.
Any further discussion? Okay. In favor, again, Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Does anybody have any other old business?
Yes. Um, something that was brought to my attention by a gentleman out of, uh, Overston. We went and signed A and Rs on Mr. Javi's property. It was a change of sixty-one A and, in my opinion, it probably should have gone through, uh, select board for the hundred and twenty day period and then to us. And I, I feel, I, I know that Dave says, you know, there are another way to round it, but it's the, it's the hundred and twenty day period and the time for people to talk about it. You know, uh, and I, I, I just felt that it should have gone through the select board first. But they normally do, and I don't know how this one made it through. But I just, I just wanna be careful because this gentleman is also on the Board of Assessors. I don't, I don't want things to get screwed up, let's just put it that way. And that's, that's my feeling about that, that particular thing. And yes, I would, uh, have a talk with the select board, hopefully, if they ever get back to normal because I feel that even though they looked at it for a septic plant in that area, they never did a real good thorough job of what they might be able to do in the future as for a septic. And that's where it would have been.
Okay.
Oh, I'll, and my little brief thing there.
Okay.
Where is this? I...
Alta Vista Farm?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the bunch of A and R lots that we endorsed.
The house lot, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's kinda interesting.
Well, Norm, this is just a question. If he do, he can get A and R lots, can he? But if he doesn't take it out of sixty-one A, can you have an A and R lot that's in sixty-one A?
I don't see any reason why you can't. You just can't change the use.
That, Norm, Dick, that's my point. If, if he leaves it in sixty-one A and it's A and R, the minute he takes it out of sixty-one A is when that one hundred and twenty days should start.
I'm trying to think, uh, lot size. He had what, one acre, two acres? And I think minimum is five for sixty-one A?
Oh, so you can't divide it up?
Something like that, yes. They may have changed it to three, but I'm not positive of it.
But, but is that, is that minimum on individual lots or a conglomeration of lots or buddy?
Well, that's just it, yeah. To me, it's a little touchy. I, I, you know, I, I don't want him to get in trouble. I don't want us to get in trouble. I just want this thing to be done properly.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else?
Who do we ask? Because I, I presume those lots have already been endorsed and recorded, correct?
Probably, yes. So I don't know if it's, you know, town council and/or, uh, should they speak and should the select board get involved?
Actually, maybe I can just jump in on this. So the, for a couple of first things. So, right now, the lots are in one ownership entity and A and R has been endorsed. There's a sixty-one A, uh, consideration. The lots can, a building permit cannot be issued for lots under this circumstance. All things that must be done, must be done before a house lot can be built and building permit issued. So that means he has his obligation under sixty-one A to resolve that. Things can be done in parallel, if you like, but by the time he gets to the building permit, the sixty-one A has to be, be resolved. He has applied, as far as I understand it, to the select board or has given notice to the select board with respect to those lots. So the select board will then form, forward that to, uh, the, all the, all the relevant boards to see if there's an interest. So he has started the clock on that issue.
Okay. So Dick, then it sounds to me like we didn't do anything wrong. It's just that Willie couldn't issue a building permit on any of those until the sixty-one A is resolved.
I grant you that, yes. I just don't want it to look like something else.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, I think recently there was a lot over at Turkey Hill where the applicant requested the A and R first, was in sixty-one A. They did the A and R first, then they did the sixty-one A. Um, I think they were trying to keep their options open and have a, a lot that they could market. I think they had knowledge that they couldn't fully realize it until they took care of their sixty-one A. He ultimately came to the select board with the request, that was circulated, the town was not interested, and then the applicant went about their business with the marketable property.
Are you referring to, uh, Meeger's?
No, not Meeger. There was another one o- up there recently on Turkey Hill, I believe it was.
Okay.
A Fife possibly, was it, was it Fife?
I don't know, it doesn't ring a...
Yeah, they ca- they came in with a, with an A and R a while back.
So once again, in that particular case, they had to do everything in order to be able to real, to get to a building permit stage.
Alright. Well, alright.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I guess the, uh, only other thing I'll bring up is that, uh, apparently unless things change, uh, town buildings are going to be opening as of July first. And our next planning board meeting is not until well after July first. And, uh, I don't know how anybody else feels, but, uh, I would just assume if we can find a reasonable way to do it, uh, call an end to these Zoom meetings. Uh, I think we gotta wait to see what happens.
I'll make a motion on that.
Can we, can we try to book the library as soon as possible?
Uh, y- you know, I'm, uh, to be perfectly honest with you, I'm gonna leave it in Dave's hands if anybody else, unless anybody else thinks we need to do more.
That's...
And the data is July fourteenth, by the way.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to see the rest of you.
Yes.
From a distance.
Right, right now I'm looking at a, some other page.
My only concern is, um, the amount of public that, that will be allowed to attend. Um, to, to put a limit on it, um, I mean, they'd have to change your meeting law again.
Now, that, that could be, you know, a concern in maybe some situations. Uh, there are, you know, there are several spaces potentially available. There's a small conference room in, in the library. If it's, uh, just the seven of us, you know, or maybe one or two people, that would probably work for the social distancing. If it's a little bit bigger crowd, there's the big conference room in the library. And there's also downstairs of, of the town hall. Uh, so...
And if it's a really big crowd, we could rent a tent.
Or use the Glenwood School parking lot.
True.
Or I'll put the pack in, the new packing lot by the library.
Yeah, I noticed they got that paved.
Yes.
Kinda nice. So... Anyway, that, that, that is just it. The only other thing I will note to you, I, I did get an email from Anita. Uh, and I'm, I hope I'm, I hope I'm handling this correctly. Uh, regarding the election, which I'm sure you've all...
Yeah, right, yeah.
Heard the news, li- looked at the numbers and, and all of that stuff.
No, I haven't.
And basically, there wa- there was a tie between two people for the Board of Selectmen and she contacted the Election Commission and that means that, uh, there was a failure to elect. So they have not elected the two selectmen
What?
that they need to.
I was under the impression that, uh, she lost by three or four votes.
Nope.
The unofficial one was Dick. She lost by one, but, uh...
Then she wanted a recount and then she lost by three, I thought.
No, that was a tie.
The official results, it's a tie.
Yep, yep.
So, uh, right now, I don't think anybody really knows exactly what's gonna happen. So we're just kind of awaiting word.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Alright.
That's a strange one.
Yep.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll so move.
Second.
Discussion.
About what?
Hey, Norm, before you let go, the discussion I wanted to ask is, based upon the, um, uh, court cases, um, is that impact us for the, uh, growth management bylaw? Or, or is that just basically Willie that needs to keep track of how many permits are going out and such like that for this year?
Yeah, that, that's, uh, I think that's strictly Willie.
Alright, I'm gonna ask the question because if we've already issued thirty-six, we're done for the year. All right, I'm going to ask the question because if we've already issued 36, we're done for the year.
Uh. I don't know.
Don't worry about it. I'll ask him. I'll ask him. I'm, I'm a little bit, since the judge added A and Rs into the bylaw that we didn't have.
Well, that's, the thing is, A and Rs don't necessarily translate into building permits.
Oh, correct. That's why we can keep doing A and Rs till we're blue in the face. It's just, it's just permits that are going out.
And you've still got to remember Bryce Lemon is exempt.
Correct. All of Bryce Lemon is exempt.
So.
Yep. That is a correct statement. But we're limited to three a month, if I remember the bylaw correctly. So at this point, we should only have 18 out and that's it. With the exception of Bryce Lemon. So, okay.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. That's all I had to question. That was it.
Okay. Dave, anything further?
No, I'm all set. All set.
I thought I heard a motion to adjourn.
Yes, you did.
Did I hear a second?
I think I seconded.
Okay. Anything further? In favor, again, roll call. Dick?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Uh, can't do Tim again, I guess. Uh, Norm, aye.
And Tamika, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Tamika?
Yeah.
You still there?
I'm here.
Uh, could you send me out like the, oh, I don't know. I'm going to say like the last two pages of our administrative account?
Yeah, I can do that. I'll have to go uptown to do that, but I can do that in the next couple of days for you.
It's not a hurry. It's not a hurry.
Sure. So basically, you just want to see the activity and the balances in the administrative ledger.
Yeah, that's all. That's all. It's just that, I don't know. It, it does, I don't know. I guess this came up, this come at our last meeting, that we, we definitely have been getting more than I share of A and Rs and even special permits. And I'm just kind of interested to see where, where our balance is at this point in that administrative account.
Yep, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Then I guess we're adjourned.